Okay, this is the regularly scheduled Town and Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, October 12, 2017. Can I get approval of the agenda as amended?
Michael makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lisa's second. So is there any further discussion? No. Yes.
Did you say the agenda as amended?
Yes.
This discussion on that by the public.
Okay. Okay. What would you like to discuss?
I believe we're going to table the discussion of Rugged Scott.
Not really. We would get to that.
Oh, good.
We were going to get to that.
Oh, I thought you just said you...
No, no. Well, this is the overall agenda as amended. There, that doesn't mean we're not going to specifically talk about any one item.
Oh, okay.
So is the motion still on the floor?
Yeah. So is there anybody else who wants to talk about the agenda? No. All right. So the motion's been made and seconded. I'm not missing anything on the agenda amendment, am I, Eleanor, before I proceed?
No, there is one additional request to continue, but the gentleman is here to do it in person. And that, I found out about that just as soon.
Should we do that?
That's later. So that's, I'm not amending, I did not amend the agenda like that because he would be...
Gotcha. Okay. So, having said all that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. How about the approval, a motion to approve the minutes of September 14, 2017? I'm going to admit through not having read them, because I was away and just didn't focus. So if we want to table that till the following month, that works for me, unless everybody else has read them and wants to move the...
I didn't read them either. I was late too.
All right. So do you mind continuing those? Okay. So I need a motion to continue approval of the minutes of September 14, 2017. Is that a motion? Michael made the motion. Jeffrey, you want to second that? All right. Anybody in the public want to talk about the minutes? No. Anybody up here want to say anything more?
No.
All right. So all those in favor of continuing till November 9, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now getting to the old business. 051-03-RUGGADSCHOT-LLC, Rugged Scott, AKA Beach Plum 40B, for the applicant. So the applicant is not here. They have requests. Are they intending to be here? Okay. Well, they've requested that we continue to November 9, 2017. So, I mean, I can give you my background on it, but I wish they had shown up. But having said that...
How long ago did they ask for the continuance?
Tuesday.
Is it because the work group didn't happen?
The work group did happen.
Okay.
With the work group that included board members.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant stated that they had attempted or wanted to have a community meeting to have some effective dialogue, and that apparently did not take place. They therefore felt that it would be premature to return before the board before that could happen.
Okay.
I mean, I think two days is sufficient notice to ask for a continuance, myself.
Yeah. I don't have any fundamental problem with the notion of asking for a continuance. We would like them to sign this extension. It's fairly important because there are guidelines that we have to follow. So why don't I just ask the audience, is anybody here to speak about the notion of continuing? Please identify yourself and speak into the mic.
My name is Sheldon Rogers. I live at Fourth Thistle Way in that development. This builder has done everything to preclude and get people not to show up at anything. He knows that in November, most people will not be available. He knows that they are here. I made a special trip to come here. It cost me close to $1,000 to fly here, and I waited until after the meeting the other day to make my plans to fly here. I had to fly to Boston, take a shuttle here. Now, I think it's important for this board to realize they are supposed to police this. Now, in reading all of the minutes, this developer has done everything contrary to the law. Most of the people affected are sitting here right now. Now, he can't really have a community meeting until next summer because the community is not here. But what is affected now has to be policed, and this board, as elected, is supposed to represent the town. And unfortunately, this developer has done everything to, I hate to use the word, to screw things up. Now, the deeds that were supposed to have been issued, number one, for the affordables, were changed, and they are mandated by state law. But they were changed considerably, and we all have copies of that. The swimming pool that was put in, that your board approved, did not pass the building department, but he changed the swimming pool and made it so that people like myself, I happen to be an elderly gent, legally handicapped, can't get into this swimming pool. He put a chair in, and I'll be damned if I'm going to go on a chair. But he does whatever he wants. He moved all the driveways. He put a parking lot literally in front of my house. Now, for you to give him an extension is just giving him a slap on the wrist as you did at the last meeting where you said, "Well, he sold two lots." Well, the repercussion of selling two lots is the land bank got shafted because they didn't get full value, and they get a percentage. Yet, he did this by selling a lot for $400,000 when the property sold for over $2,200,000. So the land bank got a shafting. Everybody's getting a shafting here by this builder, and this board is supposed to be a policeman. Yet, you people said, "He promised not to do it again." We're not in third grade. You're acting like we're in third grade and he promises. But everything he has done is contrary to the law. And for that reason, I think you have to hear this. You may not want to make a decision today, but people are here who made an attempt to be here, took off from work. I traveled here, and this should be heard. So I object strenuously, and if you want, you could take a poll of the people who live there. They'll object as well. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
What happens in a situation like this? Normally, do you have to try to get in touch with the applicant?
Well, we certainly can do a couple of things. We can try to get in touch with the applicant's representation, representative, see if they want to come over. We can continue it. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to have a discussion at length without both parties here.
I agree with that.
I just don't think it's going to be productive.
I think it would be very unusual to take testimony after the applicant's asked for a continuance, especially 48 hours ago.
Can I ask a question? Well, yeah. I mean, I don't disagree with that, Michael. I feel, obviously, this gentleman has traveled to be here for the meeting. He would have no way of knowing it was being continued. He wouldn't be contacted to be told two days ago that it was being continued. Correct? That's any better?
I forwarded the information to the various stake, most of whom are here, various stakeholders, by email.
Okay.
And I posted the agenda very soon after I was notified.
Okay.
I...
Do you want to try to call?
Nothing.
Well, I think at a bare minimum, I would like the applicant's representative to be here to sign this extension.
So should we continue this and try to get in touch with Mary Ann?
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that the, one of the representatives will be here later for another matter. So it may be that that is when he is intending to do this signing of this extension. I have informed this representative, our first representative of this, and I was told by him that he would sign it. And I sent it to him.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I have a four o'clock flight to leave here, and these are non-cancelable flights. As you, if any of you fly, you know, you could pay two and a half times as much to be able to get your money back, but it cost me almost $1,000 to get here, and I can't miss this flight. So if we could put certain things on the record, he could stream it. I didn't ask you guys to vote today. But I think we should put these things on the record so that he hears it, he could video it, he could see it, and at that point, you could table this and take your vote next time.
All right. I think what I'm going to do...
Mr. Reed's walking in the door right now.
Is he one of the representatives?
He is. I think what I'm going to do for this moment is table this so we take one more application and then come back to this. Let the applicant's representative be here to...
All right. Because there are certain points of law and certain things that I would like to show this board, and I've made copies of it so that you guys could see it as well. It's unfortunate that this board does not have a full-time attorney because I've been on many, been before many boards in many towns, and generally, an attorney is the legal backing because no one expects the representatives to be that familiar with what the law is.
And I appreciate that. The town council is prepared to get on the line with me. I was, she was, anyway, she's not here. She's prepared to call in, so I will call her. What I'd like to do for the moment, I understand you have to leave by four.
No, I have to be at the airport by four. I got to be out of here by at least 3:30.
Okay. Do you think, okay. How does the board feel? Do you want to table this for 15 minutes for the next one and then let, or now that Arthur's here, should we start this? I want to call town council. I'm getting, I think we may be getting into territory that I'm...
You may have to adjudicate this in a court of law, sir, because what...
I'm aware. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm fine, I'm fine tabling it for 15 minutes.
Or do you want to...
Or do you want to just do it?
Go ahead.
Before I talk to Mr. Reed?
Mr. Reed, we're discussing the continuance. I'm going to just dial up the town council, so I'm not playing with my phone. I don't want you to think I'm playing Words With Friends or something. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, as you know, we're requesting a continuance. We had hoped to be able to go forward today. I don't have any presentation to make. We had hoped to be able to have some dialogue with the affected stakeholders between the time of the work group meeting and today, and they indicated that they didn't want to have any discussion until we made a presentation to their lawyer. And we are working on pulling something along that line together with the expectation that we'd have it by the time of the next meeting. But as I said, we're not prepared to go forward with anything today. Mr. Posner is not here, and that's the situation.
Excuse me. But there's a law that's very specific dealing with these easements, and a presentation or anything like that is contradictory to state law. State law mandates that this property, and I could show it to you in print, issued by the state of Massachusetts, is very specific that there can be no easements, no rentals, no nothing, and that's in print, and this was a total violation. And this board, as the police authority here, has to do their thing to make sure that these easements are taken off, and whatever has to be done by the developer, done. But you can't permit any easements on affordable properties.
I thought that's what we were here discussing.
I'm sorry?
That's what we're trying to get to the bottom of. So just take a timeout for a moment. We're trying to determine if we're going to continue this versus getting into the nitty-gritty. If we decide to get into the nitty-gritty, you'll have your chance. I think what I'm going to do is call Ms. Quirk, get her on the phone. It sounds like maybe the continuance is not, well, we still need to discuss it. Okay? You good with that, Arthur?
Do whatever you feel you have to do.
How do I use this phone? Do I have to dial nine?
I believe yes. Yeah, you have to dial nine to get out.
Hello?
Do we want to try to get Susan here, too?
I'm Anna Quirk.
Hi, Eleanor. It's Ed Toole.
Oh, yeah.
How are you? We are at the meeting. I'm well.
Okay.
We're at the meeting, and we are discussing the notion of continuance. This is of the Rugged Scott matter, Beach Plum 40B. The applicant is not prepared to move forward with any new material, but there are those in the audience who have spoken up about not wanting the continuance to happen. So I just wanted you to be on the line to hear what's going on. Is that okay?
Okay. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Should we move this down?
That works as well. Okay. So we're back to the notion of continuing. We are not, I just want to be clear, we are not kicking the can down the road. We're not trying to skirt what Ms., was your name, Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers said, "We are here really only today to discuss the continuance. If we decide not to continue, then arguably, we would listen to the more public testimony."
Right.
If, Eleanor, if we, is there any reason we should not listen to public testimony today? And then...
Well, you know, certainly, certainly, it's a policy decision for the board as to whether to continue the public hearing at the request of the proponent or not. And if you decide that it's more appropriate to go forward, then you can accept testimony from whoever is there who wants to give it. The only consideration perhaps is that the potential for the continuance was certainly indicated on the agenda, and there are times when people, you know, they rely on that at their own risk because it's always up to the board by majority vote at the hearing to continue or to not continue. But it may be that there are people who decided not to come today because they thought that there would be a continuance. That might be a concern that the board would have. But people would have the ability to listen to the tapes, you know, to look at the video, to examine any materials that are submitted today. And certainly, if anyone is there today, even if you did continue and you didn't take any new testimony, you could certainly invite anyone who is there. If they have materials that they, written materials that they want to present, you certainly can take those at any time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have no objection to your taking any materials that you want from anybody who's here today. I just request that the hearing be continued so that we can continue our efforts to try to work things out in a manner that will be satisfactory to everyone.
Okay.
Mr., are you saying written materials?
I'm saying you can listen to anything you want to listen to.
Written materials that can come in at any time, and certainly, if they're presented today, and they happen to be while you're discussing the continuance, that's not the same as taking live testimony. The written materials, you know, again, can come in at any time, including outside of the public hearing process.
Okay. Is there any real downside to taking public testimony at this point and then deciding on the continuance later in the meeting, well, at the end of public testimony? Would that...
You could do that.
I mean, given the fact that some people are here?
It's a matter of discretion and policy for the board by majority vote as to whether you want to vote to continue or whether you want to proceed with the public hearing.
Fair enough. Okay. So...
It's up to us.
It's absolutely up to the board.
Right.
By majority vote, you know, if they were motion to accept the request to continue, and then they were vote on it, it would take a majority vote to continue.
Okay. So now addressing the board. It's up to us.
Okay.
So we need to decide, do we want to, I mean, we can either flat-out vote on the continuance immediately, we can listen to those in the audience, or plan C, which I'm not. So what...
Was Mr. Rogers the only one that was not notified of the continuance?
He was notified.
He was notified.
But he had already flown up here.
Ah.
Well, let's just be, let's just, yeah, let's just be clear. It was a potential continuance. It was not a continuance. The applicant asked for one.
Right. Forty-eight hours ago.
I sort of feel strongly that if they're here, we should hear their testimony.
Okay.
I agree with Lisa.
Okay. Fair enough. We all okay with that?
And as I mentioned, I have no objection to his being heard.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
So Susan is now conflicted, but...
Susan's not in on this, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Got it. Because she was sitting.
Susan's not sitting. Susan recused herself from this matter.
Okay.
Just FYI. I don't know if you knew that.
I thought that was coming, yes.
Yeah. Because she sat last time. Okay.
Okay. So are we okay with that, everybody? Seems that there are enough of us that think we should listen, since people have made an effort. So who wants to start?
I think the chairman and I are probably going to...
Some of it. Just to be clear, by way of background, Mr. Thayer and I were at the work group. Unfortunately, it was, it had gotten postponed, so it was a little close to this meeting, and maybe there wasn't enough time after, or I'm hoping if some of it was a time issue, there wasn't enough time afterward for everybody to get together and hopefully work toward a productive resolution, or not. I mean, some people may say there is no productive resolution, in which case ultimately, the ZBA will have to vote on something. So having said that, feel free.
That's why I recommended that you don't take a vote today.
Well, I appreciate you letting us know that. Why don't you let...
The first point is the state mandates a deed for affordable homes. And in that deed, I don't know if you guys have seen it, there is an addendum that is attached to every deed, and it's a very specific point, which is on page five, item number two. Now, the reason I'm really concerned is we have a major parking problem. We have 10 pounds of houses in a two-pound bag. I'm using nice words, if you know what I mean, because when you build a 40B, it's generally done on a very small lot, it's cluster building, and I have a gorgeous home. I was the first to buy. I was given a plan, which I'm, I've made a number of copies. It doesn't have a seal on it, but the plan we were given shows the layout. Now, when I wanted a two-car garage, we came to this board, you guys approved it. Now, I'm going to read to you a very short statement in here. Item two of the addendum. Owner occupancy, principal residence. The property shall be occupied and used by the owner's household exclusively as his, her, or their principal residence. Any use of the property or activity thereon which is inconsistent with such exclusive residential use is expressly prohibited, which means that no one has the right to infringe on their property other than their household. That's item one. Item two, I've mentioned to you that you approved a new swimming pool, and I brought pictures of that swimming pool as you approved it and as built. Now, I'd like to show it to you if I may.
Sure.
I can hear. I was wondering if you and I could have just a short offline discussion. Could you, I just had a comment that I wanted to make to you.
It works for me. So I, it goes for me to get up and...
Pick up the...
Oh, yeah. I don't know how to...
Take it off the speaker.
Pick the receiver up. There you go.
Hello? You're welcome. I got it. All right. Yep. I got to see if I can put you back on...
He hit the speaker thing again.
Speaker thing. There you go. Check, check. You there?
Yes, still here.
Thank you.
I'm going to present this to the chairman.
Okay.
This is a picture of the original swimming pool that was demolished, showing steps and a side area.
Okay. I just want to say briefly about the pool. We are really, had boiled this down to a modification request by the applicant. So that's what we're discussing here. We are not going back through every detail of the permitting process. If there is a zoning violation...
There is.
Can I speak?
I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you. Can actually, could you back up?
No.
You're making me nervous. If there's a zoning, specific zoning violation that you think may have happened, arguably, we are the board that that will come to ultimately. But you have to go through the channels. You have to, and we're not discussing things like the pool right now, or...
I went through the channels. I went to the zoning board. I went to the HDC, who said that you gave it to them. They told me it had to come back to you.
Well, that's my point. It has to come back to us, but not now.
Okay. So let's finish this point.
So the point that we're really discussing, you know, at this juncture, is the modification of the comprehensive permits that has been requested by the applicant.
The applicant is looking to give these people sheds and leave the easements, which are totally illegal, and you guys have to do something about it. I came up with a plan that's in your packet, how to satisfy everybody so that they can each know that they are whole again. I don't want anybody to feel they're not whole. I'm not doing this for that reason. But what I am saying is, if you looked at your packet, it was included in there, a resolution on how to solve all the problem. There's a lot of legal work, but it can be done.
Thank you.
I didn't look at that because I didn't think it was for your continuance.
Well, that's okay. I mean, there have been suggestions made. There were suggestions made, as Jeff will back me up on this, at the work group. Nobody has, you know, the sheds were bandied about, I don't think. My impression from reading Mr. Posner's letter is that nothing has been decided by any means, that the whole idea of the continuance is to foster the hope that there will be continued discussion and some resolution. If no resolution can, let me just say, you don't, nobody has to agree to anything other than, and then ultimately, it would come down to the ZBA making a vote in some fashion. So I think we would prefer if the various parties were reasonably happy at the end of the day. If that can't happen, it can't happen. So what we're discussing today is whether or not to continue this to give more breathing room to that discussion. So that's what I'd sort of like to discuss today. If everybody's going to get up in the room and say there will be no further discussion, fine. Then let's just get that out here.
One other point. If you look at the deeds that...
The whole idea of the continuance is to foster the hope that there will be continued discussion and some resolution. If no resolution can, let me just say, you don't, nobody has to agree to anything other than, and then ultimately it would come down to the ZBA making a vote in some fashion. So I think we would prefer if the various parties were reasonably happy at the end of the day. If that can't happen, it can't happen. So what we're discussing today is whether or not to continue this to give more breathing room to that discussion. So that's what I'd sort of like to discuss today. If everybody's going to get up in the room and say there will be no further discussion, fine. Then let's just get that out here.
One other point, if you look at the deeds that these people got, this paragraph that's mandated by the state was changed in every one of their deeds. They changed the wording around, and these people all brought their deeds to show it to you. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. I'm interested in the deeds. If you want to give them to us, as, feel free. Does it, who wants to talk next? No one? Just, I know who you are, but please identify yourself for the tape and TV. Thank you.
I'm Simon Azikas. I'm the owner of the affordable home at Beech Plum, lot number 27.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like to see the deed, I have it.
Yeah.
Is it what's in the packet?
It's the same one as in the packet.
Oh, okay.
But I also, I've looked at the study about the lot area easement, which takes into account all the easements for the affordable lots. And I found some mistakes on it. I would like to submit it for you to review.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Chairman, that is in the packet.
Oh, this is in the packet as well?
This is the spreadsheet that Josh Posner sent?
Yes.
Right.
So where's the original deed that we would be comparing his deed to? Does he say something about the deeds have been-
I do not know that answer.
So that's the, this is the original?
If I may, that I did include deeds for the affordable lots at the end of the packet, but because of the volume, I only included the covenant as to affordability for lot 27. I did not include it on lot 14, 20, and 24. So I have not myself looked to see if there are discrepancies.
You're giving me this, right, to the public record?
And Simon, this deed is what's in the packet.
I think so. It should be the same.
Should be the same. Somebody may mention other things.
Well, Mr. Rogers is making the assertion, I think it was an assertion, that the deed was changed at the, at the close, you know, at, obviously at the closing or before the closing. I don't think it could be changed after the closing. Am I correct in that?
I saw all those deeds this morning, and read them. All of those, that paragraph was changed in each and every one of them. These people are very shy. They're afraid to stand up.
There's no reason to be shy, by the way. I mean, this is your chance. If you don't speak up, I don't, we don't know what you're thinking. So I'm just going to say that. I mean, don't be shy. So, anyway.
It's on page 221, the spreadsheet that Zikas is referring to.
Yeah. No, I was getting to the deed issue. Clearly, that's going to take some more research. So what you're saying, Mr. Rogers, is you believe that the affordable, the deed rider that was on the affordable lots, or the deeds, were altered at the last minute to, and you're saying that that-
I don't know when, but prior to-
Well, not, it doesn't, prior to the closing, obviously. That that is non, not kosher, so to speak.
That's correct.
So we will look into that, without question.
I mean, I'm really here just to state that, I mean, nothing really new to add. And I think the letter that we sent to the, for this meeting states exactly what it is, that I don't think those easements are right. And in my particular case, we are the smallest lot at 4,100-some square feet. And the easement being of 976 square feet, that's our whole backyard. So that's why we're not happy about it.
Fair enough. I have a question for you. In terms of the notion of continuing, do you see any utility in that?
So I'm really grateful that Mr. Rogers was able to be here. And I think it's a big inconvenience for him, the change plans because of the continuance. I, I mean, I think we're here. We're not going anywhere, and neither those easements, for now. So I guess I don't have a big issue with that, except that it's really inconveniencing Mr. Rogers. And us, at some point, yeah.
Well, again, I guess I'm getting more to the point. Do you think a continu, do you think there's an opportunity to talk to the developer and to see if there's any situation that will make everybody happy? And your answer could be no, by the way. You don't have to do this. I'm just curious.
I mean, we're open to see what he, what he's able to propose. And so far, it hasn't been much. And we've been at the last meeting, so I don't know. Maybe we should wait and see what he comes up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any more questions for Simon?
No.
Hi, I'm Michelle Johnson, and I'm the owner of lot 14 affordable home. And unfortunately, I do not have my paper deed with me. I just have it on my phone. But I do have it, and I should have bought it with me, but I was rushing here from work. And I can certainly forward it by email to Eleanor. But my item two is different from everybody else's. Because it says, "Any use of my property or activity thereon which is inconsistent with the purpose of the deed rider is expressly prohibited." Whereas the other deeds say, "Any use of the property or activity thereon which is inconsistent with the resident." So I don't know, you know, if that's supposed to be. And again, obviously, if I knew what was right or wrong at the time of signing the easement, I wouldn't have signed it. So I didn't have any knowledge. I'm just becoming educated towards it. So I suppose it's up to the ZBA and attorneys to find out if this was legal for him to do or not. I mean, it is on my property line, the garage, and it is an encumbrance to me and my family and the residents, which as it states in here, it shouldn't be. And, you know, we get the impression that, well, you got an affordable home below market rate on the Antucket. You should be grateful and just accept the garage being there. I don't care about the garage. I don't want the garage. They can move the garage, and I'll be just as happy. So a shed wouldn't do any difference, because I could buy a shed from Home Depot if I chose to. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Richard Robinson from lot 20. My wife, Jane, is here too. I think this question of legality in all of this is a very important one to be brought up. Not just for the affordable homeowners, but also for the market rate homeowners, who quite possibly could have been handed something that they weren't supposed to be handed in the first place. It affects them just as much. So I'm glad that that's been raised. Also, the letter that the developer sent to the board about certain solutions, I don't feel, some of the things that he suggested, especially in our, in our case, lot 20 and lot 17, I don't necessarily think that's enough. It sounds like to me it was, you know, a $5 fix, a Band-Aid. He suggested something that's already been done before. He also suggested putting an easement on lot 16 for a parking space. I think if he just went a step further, he could probably fix two problems in one shot and just make the easement a little bigger, and move the garage, and put it closer to the people who use it. Instead of moving a hedge five inches and-
Do you have something?
Have you suggested yet to the developer?
I have.
Just to be clear, we, we have, Mr., the developer gave us, not even, it wasn't addressed to everybody, just a letter stating a variety of thoughts. The idea behind the continuance today is to further the opportunity to discuss these things. Not necessarily with us.
Right.
We don't, it's not that we don't want to be part of the discussion, and we are more than willing to go to another work group, if that's what's necessary. But I'm not sure of the efficacy of stating the fact that sheds aren't adequate, this isn't adequate, blah, blah, blah. I understand all that. But unless you are, at the end of the day, asking us and stating, "We don't have any interest in talking to the developer any longer, please vote on this,"
No, that's not the case.
Okay, then it would seem to me that these comments really should be directed at him, at the developer, not us. Because we're not the ones who are-
That's absolutely true, and they are directing the developer as well. Seeing as he was not here, he can still see it, he can still hear it.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And he needs to be here as well.
Amen. And I was certainly hoping, I think every, we were, whatever. Hoping that everybody would get together and- So, I'm sorry, I got off track there. I apologize. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Carly Scums. We're at lot 24. And I just feel, I actually feel like maybe a vote would be a good thing, because at this point, I don't feel like any of the solutions that have been brought to the table will, are adequate and would help any of us. Or at least they don't, they also don't equal the 900 square feet of the easement that was taken away. So maybe a vote would be a good thing. Because it seems like the solutions just aren't going to work.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Mr. Reed, do you have anything to say?
I would just reiterate that it is Josh Posner's desire and intent to try to work individually with the people affected, in group with the people affected, however it may work out best, directly with them through their attorneys. Without regard to who's right and who's wrong, we could spend an awful lot of time discussing that. And it doesn't really resolve anything for all parties. What our objective is, is to get together with the people and work out something, if at all possible, that does work for everybody. And if that results in there being some amendments to the permit that need to be voted on and ratified by this board, then obviously, we would ask the board to do that. But we, as stated at the work group, want to, and really at this point haven't had the opportunity to, although we've made ourselves available, to have that type of discussion with the various owners. And we certainly hope, very, very strongly, that continuing this until the November meeting will give an opportunity for those discussions to take place. Maybe it will be resolved with everybody between now and the November meeting. Maybe we'll need a further continuance, who knows? But we are absolutely committed, regardless of who's right and who's wrong, to wind up with a solution that is acceptable to all stakeholders.
Thank you. Okay, so how does the board feel about this?
Well, I just think it would be highly unusual to take a vote when the applicant's going to exasperate continuance with ample time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yeah?
Well, I'm happy to let, I don't think, I don't think anybody, only one person was asking for a vote today. I just, it seems like, I just wanted to give the people that had traveled here the opportunity to speak. I agree with Arthur that if there's a, maybe they need a little bit more time to talk about, if there is a solution. If it's only been, I mean, I don't, I wasn't, I didn't really what actually took place at the work group, if it was in the packet, but it just seems premature to vote today.
Okay. Jim, anything?
I'm not prepared to vote.
You're not, nobody's, what I'm hearing is, we're not, you're not prepared to vote on the modification of the permit. We certainly are prepared to vote on whether to continue.
Yes.
If we don't continue it, do we have, without any voting on?
Not necessarily. I mean, I'm-
What are the effects of not continuing?
Mr. Chairman, shall I weigh in on that?
Please.
Okay, you have, before you are requested modify a comprehensive permit, you have 180 days to, unless there's an extension of the time, to keep the public hearing open and to take testimony and evidence. If you close the public hearing within the 180 days, or at any point, you have 40 days to make a decision. If you don't continue the public hearing today, then that means that you can't take any new evidence.
Got it.
And you have to make a decision within 40 days.
Got it. So not continuing is a, is in essence, closing the public hearing.
Absolutely.
And then we would deliberate without any public input at that point and make a decision.
Yeah, I would say that's all the more reason to continue.
So would I.
Clearly, there are many issues that we hear about more and more, that we're dating, so.
Right. I'm not, I'm not sure it's to anybody's benefit to close the public hearing now, but, so.
And where do we stand in that 180 days?
Where do we stand on the 180 days? I'm not 100% sure.
We've already agreed to an enlargement.
If you look on your agenda, it should be set out there.
It is. But the applicant has agreed to extend that period of time.
Okay, and they're able, yeah, so.
So we have the extension here that they're, they will sign.
Okay.
And you would need to vote on it to accept it, the extension.
We would need to vote to continue and, and a separate vote to accept the extension?
Yeah, so you can just combine them.
Or two, one vote?
Yeah, so we have time to, the close of the hearing was until March 12th.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do recommend that if you're going to continue the public hearing, that you accept the extension, simply because, you know, the March date, as usual over the holidays and over the winter months where it can be difficult to access the island. You know, I would recommend that you get the extension.
Okay.
So should we, are we able to make a motion on continuance at this point?
I think so, yeah, yeah. Yeah, to make a motion to continue to November 9th and to accept the-
Extension.
Extension?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And you needed a time certain, as well as a date there?
A time certain, so November 9th, your motion was November 9th at 1:00 PM?
Yep.
Okay.
And it said that, but your same location?
Same location.
Same location.
And what is the, what's the extension that we're being given, an extra month?
The extension is, with the new time limit, shall be midnight on April 11th. Yes, roughly an additional month, 2017.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. This happens to say 17. So I'm going to amend that.
Let's roll it back to 16.
Maybe it said 19, I don't know. Oh, no, it said 16. Okay, so I want to, the effective date is correct.
Okay. So we had a motion, and Michael seconded it, if that worked? Okay, should we vote then?
Well, yeah. So is there any further discussion about the motion to continue until November 9th, 1:00 PM, 2017? No?
No.
All right. And to accept the extension with the new time limit being April 11th- All right, and to accept the extension with the new time of being April 11th, 2018. Okay, so any further discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, that was unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a question? Are you voting with two, one, three, four?
No, I'm not on this.
You're not on it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Can I leave you guys a copy of the plan that was given to a bunch of us owners of the site plan that you could look at, and maybe, I have a bunch of copies here, I know they don't have seals on them, but you might want to go through the development and see that every driveway's in, in the wrong place, on the wrong side of the house. I made some nice copies.
Yes, please.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Alana, I think we're good, right?
All right, that sounds, sounds like you're all set for now, Mr. Chairman, and I've reserved that date and time, and we can just determine, you know, as we get closer, whether you might want me to be there or be available by phone.
Perfect, thanks a lot.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so, moving on. Do we need to vote on 2017 and 2217, probably, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, yeah, 2017, Arthur I Reed, Junior Trustee, Rain 3 Walsh, nominee trust, would like to continue to November 9th, 2017, I assume also at 1:00 P.M. Any discussion about that continuance? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to talk about that?
No.
Okay, Michael makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Lisa seconds, any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 2217, Fernando C. Colono Sario and Lori Margolis, trustees, Yell Point Road, nominee trust, same thing, 189 Yell Point Road, would like to continue to November 9th.
Anybody in the audience?
What's that? Anybody in the audience here for that? No?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Lisa makes a motion, Michael seconds it, any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so, moving on, 2617, Scott B. Peyton and Kristen Peyton, 33, Harms Street. The applicant's attorney isn't here, I don't think...
He is, he's in the back.
Where he is, where he is, there he is. So, you would like to continue to November 9th, 2017. Anybody in the audience come to speak to that? No?
Makes a motion.
Michael makes a motion to continue. Lisa, do you want to second that?
Yeah.
Lisa seconds it, all those in, any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay.
I'm not on this.
So, I think we are missing Susan, who is striving to get, oh, is she here in the building?
She's here.
Oh, okay. All right. I should have just done 2817. Why don't I do that? So, Mr. Brescher doesn't mind us to stay anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
I'll do that. There's only four of us.
You can do it, there are four.
Yeah, okay. We, I think we can do 2817, Sarah Ann Miller and David E. Bossy, 27 Milk Street for the applicant. Mr. Brescher, you're requesting withdrawal without prejudice, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Thank you. All right, anybody in the audience come to speak to that? No?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Michael makes a motion to withdraw without prejudice. Jeffrey, you want to second that?
Sure.
Jeffrey seconds it. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, that was unanimous. All right. So, now, I just have to get to the proper page here. We are moving on to 2717, Douglas Labrecht, Gina Labrecht for Daffodil Lane for the applicant. Mr. Conley, just come on down. Just refresh our memory and...
The applicant, we did a proof plan that was compliant to everything except for the regularity factor. The proof plan shows two rectangular shaped lots with big curve on the Daffodil Lane itself. They are in pursuit to a rear lot subdivision if the variance is requested.
Okay, does everybody recollect this? Do, can someone help me out then? Why did we continue? What were we hoping for? Go ahead, somebody.
Oh, I remember you wanted to talk to the planning people.
Okay, planning people.
I'm not totally clear on what you wanted to talk with planning about, but I'm Leslie Snell, and I'm the Deputy Director of Planning, and the Labrecks are interested in coming forward with a rear lot subdivision. That's a concept that was approved at the 2017 Annual Town Meeting via Article 72. In order to qualify for rear lot subdivision, the applicant has to first come forward with a plan that meets all requirements of the subdivision control law and the zoning bylaw, and that's called a proof plan. Once that's submitted to the planning board and they determine that all requirements are met, then they can proceed with the rear lot subdivision. In this particular case, the two lots, which I know you have a copy of the plan in your packet, appear at first to meet all requirements of the zoning bylaw, but because the lots are in the curve of Daffodil Lane, the curve has an effect on the regularity formula. Normally, .55 is required, one, I believe, has .49, and one has .41. The intent, I believe, behind the regularity factor is to prevent lots from being highly irregular in shape, and generally, if the lot stays at least 50 feet wide, it will meet the regularity formula, but again, in this case, it's the curvature of the road that's affecting it. I'll just remind the board, this does require a variance, and in order to grant the variance, the finding is that circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or structures is somehow abnormal, I'm paraphrasing here, and that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purposes of this chapter. So, this particular plan does create two very regularly shaped lots, but it's the regularity factor because of the curve of the road that causes them to be before you today requesting the variance. If you do grant the variance, they can proceed to the planning board if they choose, and either implement this plan through an approval not required, or they can seek additional special permit relief to do the rear lot subdivision. Either way, they would be creating one new lot that otherwise meets the LUG-1 standards, or R40.
I have a question. If it weren't a curve and was, was a straight diagonal line, would it meet it?
I, well, I'm not a surveyor, but I believe that if it was just straight across the front and not in the curve, that it would definitely meet it.
Not perpendicular, Mike, but angle.
Well, the, the zone is R40, so the lot, the original lot is 80,020, so the only way to get that line to even, we had an even area subdivision for the proof plan, and so I'm not understanding, you mean from the one corner?
Well, I'm saying, Ms. Snell was making the point, sorry, that because the line is curved, that somehow screws up the regularity. If this were a straight, a straight line, although diagonal, no, still would, okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. I mean, I guess that the, it doesn't meet all the dimensional requirements. I mean, that's what the bylaw states, it needs to meet all of the dimensional requirements, and, and regularity factor is one of them. If, how do we feel about that? I mean, it would seem to me that...
Yeah, I mean, if the road, if they were on the straight part of the road and they still wouldn't make it, then what's, then what's going to be our, our benchmark for...
Close enough?
Yeah, but then we're just saying, then this is close enough.
That's what I'm saying, what's our benchmark? How's everyone feel about? Does anybody in the audience want to speak about this directly?
Just to be clear, if that were a straight line, it still wouldn't meet the requirements.
I guess not.
I think it would.
Well, straight perpendicular, it would, but not...
Not angle, not property corner to property corner, just taking the arc out of the road, no. If, but if went from, like in Surfside, there are a lot of 100 by 500 lots that meet regularity.
Because they're rectangles.
Yes, right. And the length, the length of that lot is also prohibitive with that curve.
I mean, it's close, I don't, don't get me wrong, but I mean, it would...
Right, well, the, the two lots on the proof plan, ours is rectangle as we can get, and I think it would be a hardship, the side, the area of the lot, the, the way the curve is on the road, the length of the lot, it's just prohibitive.
Well, I don't think, I don't see the hardship, the hardship is when you bought the lot, one, when, when one bought the lot, it met zoning, and then this new, new zoning bylaw was put into place. If you met all of the dimensional requirements, you could subdivide, but you can't. I mean, you know, and, and from our position, it's very difficult because what's to say the next one that is 10 square feet under the allowable area isn't close enough? I mean, everybody has a definition of close enough, so, I mean, that's my problem with it.
I'm apologizing in advance if I'm mistaken, but if it wasn't for the regularity factor, they wouldn't beat, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, so...
Because they would meet all the dimensional requirements.
Yeah, and they're, that's right, and they're applying for variance, and the grounds for the variance are the lot shape, presumably.
Yeah. As it relates to that new, the new bylaw, I mean, yeah. Anything from that end?
I could probably find my way to vote for it, based on the fact that it's only the regularity factor.
Fair enough.
I mean, I've, I've seen, this board has seen a lot of lots where, which are the reason for the regularity factor being, you know, originated. If this had a rat tail on it, I'm not so sure I'd consider voting for it.
What, you mean, like the new, new subdivision?
Yeah.
Which they have a right to get.
If we, if we okay.
What do you sign?
Well, you have a right, this is why the regularity factor came about, I'm surmising, I wasn't, I probably was around that. Yeah, so you couldn't create...
Pork chop.
Pork chop.
Which they're allowed to do.
Well, they would be allowed to do, that's what the second, or rear lot subdivision allows for, I think you only need 20 feet on the, 20 feet on the road. And you obviously then don't need to meet the regularity factor with, with those lots, or...
Yes.
Did someone else?
Leslie will speak.
Oh, excellent.
Actually, Chairman Tool just made the point that I was going to make, that the secondary, or, excuse me, not secondary lots, rear lots are not subject to the regularity factor.
Right. Why, I understand the second, or the rear lot idea. The idea is, if you have enough property, you can subdivide anyway, you can create a pork chop. That was, I assume, the intent of the rear lot, but the critical point is, you have to be able to subdivide. I mean, I'd like to subdivide my property, but I can't, because I don't meet the, any number of the dimensional requirements I, I'm... So, that, that's my problem with it. Not that I can't subdivide mine, I don't really want to. But anyway, we don't need to be laborate. What's your feeling?
I am closer to voting for it than not voting for it, but I don't want, if, uh, let's see what happens, I mean...
Well, I think we're getting to the point. No one else wants to speak in the audience, it's up to us, so...
So, this variance is, instead of, this gets them around the no waivers part, because it says it must demonstrate the ability to create a conforming subdivision, subdivision meeting all minimum requirements with no waivers.
Yeah.
But isn't a variance, aren't we, aren't we, in effect, waiving the regularity factor?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, I mean, that's the problem.
So, aren't we just, aren't we just doing...
You're going to use a variance, the topography of the land, so...
Right, isn't that doing exactly what it expressly says can't be done?
...regularity factor issue, which might even happen.
Right, I mean, it says Articles 2, like specifically calls out, must demonstrate the ability to create a conforming subdivision meeting all minimum requirements with no waivers. So, how can we then grant a waiver? Because they still wouldn't meet, because then they'd go to the planning board and they'd have a waiver for regularity, so they still aren't able to do it, right? I mean, the way it's written.
Yeah, I, so, you're, you're saying that even if they were to get the variance, they still wouldn't meet the planning board's minimum requirement of no waiver?
With no waivers, because where they're getting a waiver, in effect, a waiver on the regularity factor, so it doesn't seem like it works.
Hmm, 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 yeah.
So, I don't, I don't think we're the, I think us giving a variance precludes them from moving forward, anyway. So, they, they may not, you may not want to get a variance from us, even if we are willing to do it, you may want to go back to planning and make sure that that's really what you should do.
So, with the variance, they could move forward with the plan that shows Lot A and Lot B in your packet, or they could take that and apply for a special permit through the planning board, and the board could consider it and say, you've received the variance, and the zoning board essentially said that section doesn't apply, and we'll grant the special permit and see what happens, or they may not.
Would it matter a waiver?
We would prefer, I think, that the planning board, I think, if they want to grant a waiver, even though it says no waivers can be granted, so be it, but it's not really of our even purview to... But it's not really of our even purview to, to grant the waiver, the waiver.
Well, I guess it's up to interpretation about whether or not the, the variance counts as a waiver. But, you know, I'm not really here to stand and argue on their behalf.
No, I know.
And I don't want to...
I mean, it's just, I don't know. I mean, it's just for any, anybody going forward, the way that it's written says no waivers, I would think a special permit or a variance or anything giving you a pass on another requirement is, is, is a waiver, so...
Well, we talked with the applicant or through their representative about this ahead of time, and at the staff level, and thought that because the regularity factor does not apply to the rear lot, that there could be some connection there between, you know, a variance waiving the regularity for the two lots.
So if we do, but if we... Plus, then I think you're, I think you're putting the cart before the horse, because if we grant a variance on the side-by-side subdivision, which is the one that you have to, they have to prove to the planning board that they meet with no waivers to be able to even get the pork chop lot, right? Then if we give a waiver, then they've precluded themselves from meeting, like then if they go to the planning board, they've, they've already going with the, showing the two lots that couldn't be made a subdivision. Like, if, then, then they can't do the pork chop.
They may choose not to do the pork chop anyway. They may take your variance and move forward with the two lots that don't require the special permit.
Okay, so then that's a different situation.
I don't know what their intent is, but...
Do we want to allow them to subdivide if we think they're not going to go forward with the pork chop and they're just going to get a subdivision that they wouldn't otherwise be allowed to get? And they're getting it be, under the guise of trying to get the back rear lot development? I'm not cool with that.
Nor am I.
Yeah, um, my feeling is that they're, they're looking forward to go to the planning board to get the rear lot subdivision, because...
But like, as Leslie just said, they don't have to. And once we've given them a variance, they've got the green light to go and subdivide a property that otherwise would not be subdivisible. I don't, I think...
Well, they've, through our meetings, they specifically wanted to go with the rear lot subdivision to...
But then they arguably should go to the planning board, and even though it says specifically no waivers and ask them for a waiver.
For a waiver.
They told us, they, they recommended that we come before you to be...
I think they need a waiver from the no waiver provision.
I mean, I, I just don't think this is a ZBA, arguably ZBA matter in terms of if they want to do the rear lot subdivision, they can't meet the dimensional requirements. If they need a variant, I mean, a waiver, they should go to the planning board, who came up with this.
Yeah, I just, I think maybe this is one of the first ones. I don't know. I just feel like procedurally, it's, I, I get why the planning board would send you here. I think, though, if we vote, even if we voted in favor of a variance, we would have to limit that. I, I would only be comfortable doing that if we limited it so that that, we granted a variance, allowing this to be an acceptable proof plan for, under Article 72, that would then allow them to have a pork chop lot? I mean, we'd have, I, I would only feel comfortable if we conditioned it where that was the only subdivision they could, that I could have. I, I'm not comfortable granting a subdivision approval that they can then subdivide into this, the two long lots that they wouldn't be able to do otherwise, because then what would stop anybody else from doing that? Right? I mean, I don't know. I'm just one person, but...
I don't see how that, that goes to your last argument, that then they would have to go to the planning board and they still would need, would, there's a waiver involved.
Right, no, I know.
So I don't see how we help the cause. I don't see why you need to be here, quite frankly.
I think we actually hurt the cause, because if we grant a variance, then we've granted a waiver, and the Art, the Article 72 specifically says, if you have a waiver, you can't do this. Which, I don't know, I mean, that begs the question, like, what if this property had existing special permits on it for, I don't know, like, those are, I don't know. I think it's just maybe, maybe procedurally needs to be flushed out a little bit more.
Continue. So, we could vote? We could continue while the applicant explores another option, but doesn't want to foreclose this one?
I mean, could we, um, I mean, the, from planning staff, it doesn't seem like they have the same concern that I've brought up, but would, would we entertain or can, is it even, can we even grant a variance, but then limit it towards one option of a future plan? Like, we grant a variance only?
Well, why don't, but, but, I suppose we can do that, but don't you think it makes sense for the applicant and/or counsel and/or the planning staff to figure out if that really...
Yeah.
...puts a cloud on things versus actually helping them?
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, you need to get permission from the planning board to have a waiver, whether it's through us or, or not.
Yeah.
If we could continue this matter, that would be great.
Yeah.
The, it's my understanding the planning board cannot grant variances, so...
No, but they have to, it says...
It's a special permit, right.
Well, no, it says, it, it just says that you, you have to demonstrate to the planning board the ability to create a conforming subdivision, meeting all the dimensional requirements with no waivers.
I understand.
Right?
That's why we're here.
So then if you come back to them and they're like, well, we can do it with this variance.
But you still wouldn't have created, I think what Susan's trying to say, or is saying, not even trying, is that by, you, you, the variance doesn't mean that you created a proof plan that meets all the dimensional requirements.
It does the exact opposite.
It, yeah, okay. So it doesn't really help you.
Yeah, I feel like we might actually hurt you if some, because you do, there isn't, there is a letter in the packet objecting to this, so if we, that's an argument someone could use against you guys in an appeal, so I think it really should be flushed out, so you don't...
Why we were told to come here.
Oh, well...
The planning board told us to come here to...
Avoid that.
To go for you.
Yeah. Okay, well...
All right, so we're going to keep...
If we could continue, it's fine.
Yes.
That would be great.
You okay with that? November 9th? Is that your motion?
Sure.
So we continue to November 9th, 1 o'clock, 2017, here. Mike, will you second that?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? No, all is in fair say. Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Okay. What's that? Well, we, we did 2817, so we're 2917, Starbuck Road, nine, no, I'm sorry, 2917, 19 and 21, Starbuck Road LLC, 19 and 21, Starbuck Road for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney John Brecher, representing the applicant. We, we are going to request a continuance today, simply because we received a, a letter from an abutter regarding such issues as landscaping, screening, et cetera. And my client has a landscape architect who is unable to attend today. So we would like to flesh out those details to give the board a more comprehensive and formal response, and so that she can be present at the November 9th meeting.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience come to speak to this before we talk about voting on a continuance? No. All right.
Can I, well, I had some comments, just because it's tied in so tightly with another application in terms of just the whole Matikit plan and the...
Sure.
Is it, should we discuss? And I think we had asked for some feedback from the planning board on it, hadn't we?
That's what?
So, I think maybe...
Why are those on your screen?
So maybe we should discuss parts of it, so that one, unless we're going to continue the next one as well.
Uh, sure. Go ahead.
Relating to the second application, we will not have a full board.
No.
Oh, we're not going to? The Mullen was not able to be accepted? Oh, all right, so I'm not going to go forward on, I didn't realize.
Okay, so why don't we continue them both then?
I'm so glad I came home.
They didn't accept the Mullen?
Well, it wasn't done in, the details weren't quite worked out, unfortunately, because Keram didn't get the paperwork due calendar time and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, it was, it was here.
Right. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah. Okay.
So, does this mean we're continuing the, this planning staff discussion about this issue?
Well, we could either listen to the planning staff on this issue or ask Leslie to come back at the next one, which I sort of prefer, so it's fresh in our minds, if that's okay with Ms. Snell. Yes? Thank you. Your board?
Mark.
Lisa? Please, Michael, Mark, and we have two conflicting questions. Oh, I didn't know Jeff and Michael had conflicts.
Jeffrey and I.
I do.
Oh, you did.
I know you're happy. Okay, so, it, do we, is that okay in terms of the planning staff coming back? Or do we want to hear it now?
No, I only wanted to hear it if we were going to move forward on the second one.
I'd like to hear what the criteria is.
Okay. Well, maybe then we'll ask Ms. Snell to come back next time, too. We always like to have her. So why don't we, we're, we're still considering the continuance, but we are going to hear... Yeah. From the point...
Well, we could do the continuance, I think, and then hear from Leslie.
No, why don't we just wait on the continuance?
So that this goes into testimony?
Yeah. And then if we are unclear, or, so all we're talking about, just to be clear, right now is 2917, because I have a conflict, as, as Jeffrey, on 3417. So all we're discussing. Okay? So why don't you pose your question?
Yes. I'm, I'm sure there's cer- certain rules that you have to comply with in order to get a, a special permit. And can you tell us what they are?
Sure. Just for a little background, Article 69 at the 2017 Annual Old Town Meeting was a citizen petition. They proposed to prohibit swimming pools in certain parts of Matikit. So the planning board, during the public hearing process, decided that a prohibition was perhaps a little too strict, and that they would rather proceed with a special permit option. So Article 69, as approved, does require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals in order to have a swimming pool in the Village Residential District. Now, that's not limited just to Matikit. There are other areas that have the Village Residential Zoning District. In order to qualify for the special permit, you have to first exceed the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and then second, the pool and the associated equipment has to be located at least 20 feet from any lot lines. So that increased the typical side and rear yard setback from 10 feet to 20 feet, just as it pertains to pools and equipment. Now, the reason why the planning board thought the special permit option would be preferable to a straight-out prohibition or leaving it the way it was, that was just allowed by right, is that it would give the zoning board an opportunity to closely review the plans and see if there are any mitigation measures that need to be considered. So you have a memo in your packet from the Matikit Residence Association, the Matikit Conservation Association, and the Smith Point Association that I actually think is really informative, so if you haven't read that, I would recommend that you do. Certain conditions that you could consider for the swimming pool special permit would be maybe extra vegetative screening, you know, if there are concerns about, you know, other noise impacts, perhaps pool equipment could be located in a shed or some kind of covered structure that would reduce the noise. Prohibition on outdoor lights or outdoor speakers. You know, typical conditions that would minimize the impacts to abutting property owners. Or you could also make the determination that there don't need to be any extra conditions and that the placement of the pool and the equipment is appropriate for the lot. You could suggest other siting of the pool and equipment, as long as it was, you know, within those setbacks. So really, the effort here was to add an extra layer of review for pools in that area, in the Village Residential District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Satisfied with that for now?
So, maybe I'll just follow up by asking, so could you assume that if they met the setbacks of 20 feet and a house was, the neighbor's house, the closest to Butter, was 100 feet away? That you would not need to enclose the pool equipment?
Well, I think that's something that you all will have to consider on a case-by-case basis, but I did want to remind you that the language in Chapter 139, Section 30A, which is the special permit language, has been slightly changed because of a concern raised by the Attorney General. So that's kind of important, and it was changed at town meeting. It now says, "Special Permit Granting Authority shall," used to say "may," "shall issue special permits for structures and uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, subject to the provisions of such chapter." So if they meet those minimum requirements, you really have to come up with something very firm if you decide to deny the permit. So I think you should really consider conditions. And also, I noticed in some of the letters, people were bringing up concerns that are totally outside of zoning. So, of course, those will have to be filtered out.
Well, just, just to continue on that, I, I personally would think that if, if the neighbor's house is 100 feet from either the proposed pool or the property line, which would make it a minimum of 120, that the board probably doesn't have to worry about noise from the pool equipment. If the neighbor's house was pre-existing non-conforming as to setback, and so the, the neighbor's house was five feet off the property line, 25 feet off the pool, I think it should be considered.
I think that's an excellent point.
Leslie, can you repeat that about, I think you said 13930A?
Yep, it's 13930A1. And also subsection two talks about the permits may impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations intended to ensure that the use or structure is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. So that's where you get the authority to impose conditions.
Then you were talking about that one? I'm sorry.
No. I appreciate that.
Well, that's a big change, though. I think the, the idea that, because what was in our packets was, "Special Permit Granting Authority may grant a special permit, not the shall." If that's been changed, that makes a huge difference in terms of those applications.
And that was unsolicited advice provided to us by the Attorney General when reviewing something unrelated to that section, so...
So, so the "shall" basically means we have to grant the special permit, yet the next few sentences gives, give us the authority to put conditions on.
Yes.
Is that what you basically said?
Yes, you would have to grant the special permit unless you could make the finding that the relief requested is in conflict with the zoning bylaw.
And that would, that would be that they either couldn't meet the 20-foot setback, or it wasn't a conforming lot.
20,000 square foot lot.
Or perhaps there's some extenuating circumstance, like the lot's really oddly shaped and the pool is not in any way connected to the house, and you make some determination that, you know, it doesn't meet the spirit of what was intended or something like that. I mean, I, you'd have to really think about that on a case-by-case basis. But I think in most situations, you're going to be looking at just imposing conditions or deciding that they're not necessary.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Yes.
So is this unique in how we're dealing with this, with the pools in the zoning district? Or is another body doing the same thing in all the other zoning districts?
Village Residential is the only district that allows swimming pools by special permit.
Right.
They are prohibited in Scotsett Old Historic and Residential Old Historic. And in all the other districts, they're allowed by right as an accessory use.
Okay, so they're, in those districts, they're not going through this type of review by another board, by the planning board or HDC?
Correct. And when...
Well, HDC, yes.
HDC, but now... HDC, but not these types?
No.
Not special permit review.
No.
No, and the intent, I believe, in many meetings with the residents of Matikit who proposed this article, was to really get at prohibiting or restricting pools in old Matikit because there are many, many pre-existing nonconforming lots there that are quite small and, you know, there may be some stronger impact there than in the larger lot areas.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I noticed on one of the letters that they requested a litany of restrictions, some of which I think are probably against, wouldn't comply with the building department. But there was one that I thought made some sense, depending on what type of water you use in your pool, and that was restricting the disposal of pool water, which is usually done on a yearly basis when they winterize them. They drop the pool level two or three feet and they didn't want that water dumped in Matikit, basically. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I think that may be more of an environmental consideration than a zoning matter, but, you know, and I've mentioned this to you all before, when you're thinking about conditions, you need to think about enforcement and how, you know, does the zoning enforcement officer go out and enforce certain types of conditions? And that's certainly one that I think would be very difficult to regulate.
Well, we could still impose it and then maybe the Matikit Association could help enforce it or, well, we can, you know, but I understand what Leslie said.
Yeah, no, I think it might make some sense, but.
I'm curious, Leslie, does the, the Matikit work, whatever, you know, the group, are they aware of that zoning, that language change from May to shall?
That wasn't done this year at town meeting. That was done several years ago.
But when you came up with this most recent, with, working with the Matikit group, they, I'm just curious, do they understand that it's a shall versus a may?
I know that the people that I have met with do understand that because we've talked about it specifically.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from Leslie? No? Good. So, again, what we're talking about, did you want to speak?
I did, only because this is a public hearing and I just want to mention something because it may affect my application.
Go ahead, please.
On Mr. Ameris' question about the disposal of water, I did pull out of a Concom decision what they do, what they impose in terms of water disposal, which I thought I would give to you. They don't allow any discharge within Conservation Commission jurisdiction. They also make you stop all chemical treatment of pools three weeks prior to draining the pool and then you can't restart chemical treatment until May 1st. And having sat through a variety of Conservation Commission meetings on pools, the reason for that is that the chemicals in the pools after three weeks are completely dissipated and inert, so what you're discharging at that point is just regular water. So, I thought that might be helpful for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to be in charge of the final pool companies?
Yes.
Okay, so, are, so back to the notion of continuing this application and/or 3417 because there isn't a quorum on that one. Are we good? Do we want to continue?
Sure.
Yeah?
I'll make that motion.
You heard enough? Yeah?
I'm ready.
Okay, nobody else want, did anybody else in the audience want to speak? Okay. Just, will you come down and identify yourself, please?
Sure.
Thanks.
Mark Palmer, I'm at 308 Matikit Road, and I had sent in a suggestion, proposal about these four protections that could be applied to all pools in Matikit, which should address, well, my concerns anyway. And if anybody had read it and had questions, we could talk about it or I can come back next time.
I read it.
I read it.
And one, you had both, not ground lighting, but lighting of the area as well as pool lighting. And I believe the pool lighting is required by law.
Yeah.
The in-water lighting?
Yes.
Yes.
You can't have a dark pool just in case somebody's drowning, I think.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, maybe there's some way it could be downed, downward shielded to comply with the, what I had requested was a strict interpretation of the existing lighting laws. And the issue is, one, with light pollution, but secondly, if you're looking at the stars and you have this big rectangular field of shimmering light, you're pretty much blinded, you know, because it takes a while for your eyes to adapt. And we have very rare darkness levels and low sound levels in Matikit, so I'm just trying to protect those two things.
I'm curious about the, I was unaware that it's a code issue, you have to have lights.
Well, I would think.
Oh, yeah.
But then.
Because you dive in a pool at night, you wouldn't know how deep it is.
No, I'm asking a question, so what if you didn't turn the lights on?
That's, that's a different story.
But I mean, they don't have to go on, I'm curious.
They might go on.
All the stuff, it's going to make sure you turn all your pool lights.
But I wonder if they go on.
Or turn them off.
Turn them off.
I'm just curious, I'm going to look into that.
Well, the lighting ordinance requires that they all be turned off at 10 o'clock, right? I sent the copy.
Yeah, again, I mean, unfortunately, there are enforcement issues, but.
Yeah, well, do you guys have floodlights approved by the HDC? No. Okay.
Not yet.
I know the, the.
Maybe they'll get that idea now that you mentioned that.
Bring that up at dinner tonight, will you?
Yeah, I'll tell it to my husband.
Okay, we did get your letter, just want to make sure you know that. Specifically, I mean, I would prefer that you come back next time to speak specifically to this application or the other, next one, if that's okay with you.
Sure, I'd be happy to, yeah.
Okay.
Don't you think?
Yeah, definitely.
So, we can get into that? You good with that?
Can I ask Leslie one question?
Sure.
Leslie, when did you say the AG changed, when did the official change from May to shall?
I should have been prepared for that.
I don't mean like the day, but like you, I thought, did you just say it was a couple years ago? Because I thought this was only approved in 2017.
Right, and this was in our packet.
Can I see what you're looking at?
Like, and it's in this too, it says May here too, in the one that we have in the packet. Oh, yeah, sorry. So, this is just like an excerpt in our staff report, but this is from the bylaw.
So, the language that you're looking at is in the definition of swimming pool? The language that I was referring to is in the special permit section in the back. So, the definition section's 139-2, that's where May is used. The shall is in section 30.
Where's section 30 here?
Do we have section?
I'm not sure we have section 30, I think that.
That's just the standard section that applies to all special permits.
But we don't have to approve all special permits.
That's what I was wondering, so you're saying?
Yes, you do.
You're saying that the change.
You do unless you find that whatever the request is.
Okay, so you're saying the change from May to shall is not just limited to swimming pools?
Correct.
It is a change that occurred on the entire level of anyone granting a special permit for any reason.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
But even the May to shall, you could still, the shall only.
Only if you meet the conditions that are required or you, right, it's not.
With May, it was more like, ah, I might do it, I might not do it, but with shall, it's a little more firm.
Yeah, shall makes sense too because if, if there is a special permit allowed and someone meets the conditions that allow it.
Right.
They can get it.
But is there a conflict now between this specific provision and the general?
I think it would be if it was the other way around. I think if this one said shall and the other one said may, but I think because the other one's more restrictive, I think it's okay.
This is similar to RC zoning, you know, where you can, you need a special permit to put commercial in, but it's also allowed.
Right.
So, they can't, you can't really get turned down, the board can put conditions on.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to find that whatever the proposal is, is substantially in conflict with the bylaw, whatever that exact language is.
It's a conflict issue.
I feel, I think that's, I feel comfortable with that.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Clarification, that was approved via Article 58 at the 2016 Annual Town Meeting.
Okay.
And it was flagged during the Attorney General review of articles from the 2015 Town Meeting.
What was flagged?
Oh, okay.
That made a shall.
In section 60, in Article 69 or in Article 58?
No, Article 58 changed the language from May to shall in the special permit section at the 2016 Annual Town Meeting.
So, that's.
It was some language in an article from 2015 that brought the need for the change to the Attorney General's attention.
Okay, and that's 139, section 30.
13930A.
30A, okay.
May we send it through?
Perfect.
I need some additional reading material.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm not getting sent it, please. Okay, so we're talking specifically, why don't we do them one at a time? 2917, 1921, Starbuck Road, LLC.
I'll make the motion.
The applicant has asked for a continuation.
I'll make the motion to continue until the November 9th meeting at 1:00.
Thank you very much. Who wants to second that? Michael seconds it. Any further discussion? No. Wasn't fair to say hi.
Hi.
Okay, so, it's moving on to, well, I'm not sitting on 3417, so Lisa, what do you want to do?
You can leave 34 as well, just now.
No, we're going to take another vote on that. But somebody else is going to do it.
Okay, so that is, hold on, I'm just going to.
I'm not sitting.
3417, Robin E. Hallick and Quipford W. Hallick. There's been a, we're going to continue that due lack of a quorum.
For a.
A five-member board, is there anybody here to discuss that? Sorry, Terry.
I'm on it.
Yeah, there was somebody here that wants to discuss the continuance of that.
Well, just wanted to introduce ourselves to the board.
Yep.
I would object to any public question I'm giving on this because we don't have a law.
Yeah, they don't have a five-member board.
Right, I understand, I just, we had submitted a letter, our introduction could not be at last meeting would be helpful.
Did you just want to introduce yourself?
Yes.
Sarah? They submitted a letter, they just wanted to introduce themselves.
I can make them back at the next meeting if they introduce themselves.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's probably a better idea, thank you.
Very much.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to continue till November 9.
9.
1:00 PM at this location.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Okay, I'm out on this.
We're going to take a brief break. Break. Okay. Are we going to ask you to get a race on? Oh, really? Isn't it cool? I loved it.
And bike, you can bike everybody's bike.
Yeah.
Looking like this for a taxi.
Yeah. So you can walk into it.
And then it's been a 70-year-old lady from 25 miles an hour. No helmets.
No, no helmets.
And the old heads can ride on a bike.
Not really.
Up to 57 CCs.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What I loved was, you know, this will sound sexist, but it's not, but you see these very well-dressed people, men and women, as a matter of fact, they'd be riding around on their bikes.
And it is because it's so flat, right? But it's easy.
Very flat, yeah.
And all the English things.
Yeah, like nothing, nothing complicated, right?
Did you go to Anne Frank's House? It was such a long line, we never went. Yeah, that was fun, that's a fun place, just so different.
Yeah, and canals, like people don't realize.
Yeah.
How many canals?
When I loved, I went to the museum where they showed how they built these, you know, and they take, back in the day, they would, there's this crude machinery that would drive these huge spruce trees.
Wow.
That's the underpinning of all of the.
Really?
Yeah, but because they're in an environment that's free of air.
Ah, sure.
Right, it doesn't rot. But it was fascinating, they had a, you know, it just was a bit, basically, I'm sure, just a giant stone that they lifted up by hand and boom. It was fascinating.
Amsterdam and the, and the underpinnings of all the buildings.
All right. You were way back in the room doing God knows what.
Lisa.
All right, I'm not going to buy you this a bad thing as well.
What's happened inside it?
Are you, are you ill?
I just want to give a couple of comments I had.
Well, it's not Eleanor's incentive, you talk like Eleanor purposely sent you. No, I get it from all the time, you can't ever open those things, you don't have to notice. I mean, like Jeff sent me one once and it was just bizarre because we had just, remember I told you that we had just talked about something? So, your response looked reasonable to me, so I opened it and it was like, you know, somebody hacked me. But it was just, it had to be perfect timing. All right, who's sitting on this? Edward Tool, Susan McCarthy, Jeff there, Michael Amerifer, Mark Corr, and Jim, and Lisa is conflicted.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't think that, I was just talking to help, you know.
So, we'll just wait for, no, we're all here, so we can get going. Okay, you ready? Terry? All righty, 3517, 115, Washington Street Extension LLC, 115 Washington Street for the applicant.
Yes, for the applicant, Sarah Alger and with me, Terry Sanford and Brad Guedin, who are representatives of the owner LLC. You had requested a variety of full-size copies at the last meeting, so.
So, I think what we have here is a full set.
That's all right, that's okay.
Of the plans for these.
For these four houses. And then Terry has to put more and after the site plans.
Thank you. Michael and I can show you. What is this?
Well, this here are four houses.
Clearly.
I guess we did ask for all this, right? Yeah?
Eleven by seventeen, we didn't miss. My favorite show today.
Okay, so to refresh the board's recollection, the reason that we're here is that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. The lot's non-conforming as to frontage having just under fifty feet of frontage in a zone that requires fifty feet. It's also non-conforming as to, as to use, um, there being, I think, five structures, currently at least four of which have consistently been used as residences. This relief that we're requesting is very similar to the relief that we requested on Meter Street, where we will be demolishing the existing structures, then reconstructing four dwellings. Those dwellings will all conform to the zoning bylaw. Each dwelling will have a parking space as required under the bylaw. To the extent, because we're non-conforming use, there is no specific parking requirement other than the one space per dwelling unit to apply, but to the extent that the board would apply a different standard, we're asking for relief from that by special permit. And following the reconstruction, which will all conform with applicable zoning, all these structures have already been approved by the, um, H D C. We would be condo-ing them.
Okay. You finished?
I think so, I think that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Michael, you had a question at one point about the number of bedrooms. How many are there now?
I believe there are nine bedrooms currently.
And the plans in front of us are what, thirteen? So it's, each one is three? I thought I counted one of four.
The, the interiors of the buildings are still a little bit of work in progress. Uh, on one of the buildings, uh, there's what appear to be two bedrooms that actually, one of them is not a bedroom, it's, it doesn't have a closet, it's attached to the other bedroom, so it's sort of, it's like a whole part of the house that's shut off as one bedroom with two wings with a bathroom sort of in between it and a common space.
Okay.
Technically, it's a, there's three bedrooms in that house, not a four, so. But a quick glance at the plans is hard to decipher that.
So, but still, there are more bedrooms than there were there.
I, I pulled up the, uh, I, I just came aboard on this application today, obviously. So I looked up the building on the internet and it, three years ago, they claimed that there were nine bedrooms in two buildings. Is that right, two dwellings or three?
There's four build, there's five structures on the property.
Yeah.
Four of which are used, or have been consistently used as residential dwellings. By my count, there are nine bedrooms across those.
Yeah, that's what it said, nine bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah. And how they've actually been used between now and then, I mean, you know.
Yeah, but we don't, how they were used is not necessarily germane, but, uh, there are five, five buildings and, uh, Sarah, remind me, you basically proved or showed evidence that four of them had been used as dwelling units before the advent of zoning.
Most of them since the advent of zoning, one of them in the early seventies, but now with the changes to one thirty and, to one thirty-nine and also forty-eight, um, seven, those are now considered pre-existing, non-conforming.
What I saw on the internet planned that they were built in nineteen fifty.
Yeah, they're all, they're old.
Doesn't mean, maybe it's accurate, that's.
Do you believe everything you see on the internet?
No, we did, we did, we were able to get all of the construction back to, um, pre-nineteen fifty-five, so the, you know, the fallback position is doing an eighty-one L, but we didn't feel that that worked quite as well as this particular layout.
Would the eighty-one L give you four building sites somehow?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes, not as, in a, as an ideal configuration, not as elegantly, but yes, we'd get, yes.
'Cause this is pretty elegant, stuffing all that in there, within inches. All right, well.
The bill, yeah, the building's gonna have to be very, very carefully constructed and Jeff Black will be spending a lot of time there.
One of my concerns is just the, uh, the, the volume going in there versus what's there now. I know you can do that. Um, do you have some sort of letter or can you get it from the fire department that they are comfortable with this configuration and are, in essence, willing to sign off on it because they can get their firefighting equipment?
Well, we're meeting the twelve-foot required roadway.
Well, only to the second building and then after that, there are two more buildings.
Right.
So we don't really meet it. I mean, you meet that, yes.
Yes.
Let me rephrase that, you meet it, but I'm saying from a strict pragmatic standpoint, probably hard to get the truck down the five-foot side. So I, all I'm saying is that there is some, safe, there are some safety concerns.
I mean, I think access to the structures from public ways is probably less than fifty feet from every structure. And there's a hydrant at the, right in front of the site, so.
On Washington Street.
On Washington Street Extension. So even the, the rearmost building is essentially a rear cottage for the house that fronts on Union Street. Again, and just in terms of, you know, distance for firefighting apparatus and stuff, the, the density is, and access is in line with lots and lots of existing stuff in town.
Well, I'm not, again, I'm not disputing that, I'm simply saying, can you get someone to, from the fire department to say? Yeah, that, that we, we can effectively take care of these buildings and the, there is a fence, I'm not saying the fence doesn't come down someday in between the Wash, the Union Street house that you're referring to and here, so. It didn't seem that easy to make, let's put it that way when I toured the site.
Sure, I think if you look at it on the G I S., again, the, the rearmost building, if you look at its proximity to both Union Street, Duck Pond Way and the new Mariners Way and the driveway, the, the parking area that we're proposing, there's, there's quite a bit of, of, of access. So in ter, I mean, in terms of requesting a letter from the fire department, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I, I have some experience with sort of what they're willing to offer, just in general, I think that's gonna be a, a tall order.
I just don't, you know, quite frankly, I'm not, uh, that conversant with what is required, I mean, you obviously, on your own lot, can't get even close to the buildings, the two rear buildings, and whether or not you can go on Duck Pond Lane and then cross over, I assume you can in, in today's world, I don't know.
Those are all public access points and.
I think the fire department gets out to a fire the way they need to get to it.
And also bordering land bank property in front of Goose Pond. Again, I, from a, from a pragmatic standpoint, I think access to the core of that lot is not, not particularly difficult.
I'm not sure I agree with that, but.
What are these, squared up?
I just wanted to ask if you could come down and just show me on this plan, just to make sure I understand correctly. So, drive in here, got four parking spots, and then this is.
This is a setting ground, essentially boardwalk.
Mm-hmm.
That you would walk to the end and these would be your primary access.
No idea.
It's marked out as a patio.
Oh, that's what, is that what those rectangles are, patios?
Yeah, so, these are potential.
What's this?
Oops, sorry, hardscape, yeah, that's hardscape.
That's all hardscape?
Yeah.
At least it's planned, it's not a building.
The, the, correct, that's not a building. The buildings are simply.
No storage sheds, no nothing else.
Nothing like that.
What do people do with their stuff?
Um, underneath, I mean, that, we did in, on Meter Street, we, um, we built compartmentalized access to underneath the buildings.
And is this marked out here as well?
The one that Carp is doing, it's not up in the air.
The house, yeah, exactly.
Right here. It's a stop. That's right next door.
I think this is the, this is the line, right here.
So why isn't the one next to you that I think Carp is doing, why isn't that up on filings and out of the ground?
It, it is lifted, ours are a little bit higher because we're in the velocity zone, which has a slightly different set of floodplain requirements, so actually, the, the house on these plants that's closest to Washington Street is set at the lower elevation and the three in the back, which are in the velocity zone, are set at a slightly higher elevation. But the, but they all, they're all meeting that same, same height requirements.
So are these the minimum height requirements?
Yes. Yeah, we set them as low as allowable by building code. And there's a, there's a little bit of grade change there, too, between the N E D lot and us, so again, you know, in terms of pure visibility.
I guess I would like to see that, evidence of that, too, I mean, I don't disbelieve you, but, so when it says.
Sure, I mean, the height stuff was, that was heavily examined by the H T C, obviously, because they were, they were very precise about the ridge heights as well as the first floor plate heights. So I don't, I don't know on those plans, but those are to scale, set to grade, so it, it is on there. If you, if you want something in addition on.
High water mark, is it negative, if I'm reading this correctly, yeah, negative, negative from first floor pl, first floor is zero. High water mark is minus three feet, four inches, and the free board elevation is minus one. So why is the first, is the high water line the line from which you need to maintain?
I believe the zero on that plan would be the floodplain requirement, which is where the underside of the first floor is set, with the floor structure set down into the floodplain as allowed. So the, the bottom of that structure, which presumably is twelve inches deep, would be at negative one. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me if, if indeed that is the floodplain level, so all I'm saying is you just need, we just wanna stick something in the file that that is the.
Yeah, that, that's easy enough.
The floodplain level. Well, how does, Arthur, are you here to speak to this?
No.
No? Okay. Is anybody here to speak to this? No. So how do we feel about this?
You satisfied their requirements.
You mean in terms of parking?
Well, the, one, one question I have is you've got, you, you have satisfied the parking. Where is there public parking down on Washington Street? I, I know there's a lot of trailers down there year-round and, and parking in front of sale seafoods. Who owns that land?
I believe that's all town-owned land.
Town-owned?
That's, that's set for public parking.
It's signed, no overnight parking.
Correct, not overnight.
Right. How many trailers do you have down there?
Uh, no, no, no other concerns or, Susan, you got anything? All right.
Have you guys laid out the parking down there? Like, it's a big camp.
Yes.
Can you physically get a car in there?
We spent.
Back it out, turn it around without driving over the landscape.
Yeah, we spent quite, yes.
Really?
We spent quite a bit of time because we made a mistake on that on a previous project, so. We, we measured it three, four times, we, you know, referenced all the parking regularity formulas and so on and so forth to make sure that it would work. It's not just work, but work so it wasn't uncomfortable.
I had seen no way, on that far right, well, maybe, not in my truck, which has a horrible turning radius, the far right one, you gotta go out, I guess then you would make the.
Just back in, right?
Oh, back down the little skinny thing?
My Suburban, I'd have to back in.
There's no way you're getting this thing out without making a four. One, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Four-point turn. I don't know. Like I said, it seems like a lot of, uh, stuff in a.
Yeah, talk a little bit about that stuff.
What's that?
Lot of stuff in a five-pill bag.
Yeah. But I, I, I would like to see the floodplain stuff just so that we have it on file. Uh, I, I have some concern about the fire, but if no one else does, we can move off that. Firefighting.
Well, the building department's gonna have something to say about that.
Do they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were, you know, they were.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I've never heard of it.
They, they did on our Meter Street project, they gave us scrutiny on that.
To what extent?
Fire rating and so on and so forth and access.
Well, fire rating.
Fire rating? Yeah, I'm not talking about that, but, um. What did the name?
The aisle width is twelve feet.
Well, they need twelve feet for the first building to get to the parking. Then after that, that's just, I mean, you're making the argument, oh, aisle width in between each building.
No, the aisle width into access to the parking area.
But why wouldn't you have to have the twelve feet of separation between each building and the lot line? Well, you wouldn't because the lot, the setback's only five feet. Some, uh. So I just wouldn't wanna be in either one of those, or any of them, frankly, but.
So I think those are valid concerns, but I don't know that they're.
Steel pillars?
Well, not only that, I just don't know that we have any say over them.
Well, we have say over the amount of stuff in a small area. I mean, you could go back to the, what, what is the ground cover that exists there?
It's, uh, I believe it goes from twenty-eight to thirty-two or something like that, it's about a five or six percent increase in ground cover. And the zoning allowance is fifty.
So it's relatively nominal? So, it's relatively nominal?
It's currently 20%.
I mean, I get that there's a lot in there, but if it was a house, a guest house in the back with a pool and a drain, you'd just have a driveway and the same kind of thing, so.
The density, I mean, arguably, the density on developing in a more conventional manner would be the same, if not more intensive.
Wait, the 25%?
Yeah, about 7%.
That's 25%.
But arguably underground cover.
Yeah, no, I didn't. I was just wondering. I guess there's not enough room if you move this building back, put parking up front.
Why would you want to do that?
Easier, easier to get in and out.
All right, well.
Sorry, what is this proposed, is this up there, or is this in the board? I'm just curious.
We put a boardwalk.
Uh, now the boardwalk would be service.
They're just represent hedges.
Okay. I'm just thinking from access, fire access.
And to be honest, I think that's, none of this has been, you know, soft scape isn't something that's approved or really to be viewed in a landscape architecture.
Will you have the walkway behind the buildings?
Yeah, so this is set to be, to be set in-ground as a walkway to distinguish your boardwalk area.
So, you will have the boardwalk back there?
Yeah, and, but that'll be in-ground, like you can drive on it and such.
So, no other comments? No? Do we want restricted dates if we were going to approve this?
Instruction dates?
Yeah.
Sure.
I personally, we always do. Do I care? No. But, you know, we always do. If you need relief, we always do, because that's the only time you have to come here, so. All right, so, let's move on then. If, you know, in substantial compliance with these plans, I mean, don't, needless to say, don't come back because it's over the line.
No way.
Anywho, if you come back, I'm not coming.
I'm retired. So, what else? Dates?
You want the floodplain information in there?
Yeah, I'd like the floodplain information, so if you just get that and it's in conformity with what you've submitted, we'll sign off if we vote in the permanent. Or we could continue and you could give it to us next time.
I'd prefer just vote.
Hi, it gets complicated if for some reason it isn't what's represented, and then the whole thing is to be...
Yeah, I mean, it's an engineer plan that was scrutinized by the HTC. I can assure you, it's...
Well, we don't have the engineer's plan. That's all I'm saying. Again, it's not that I don't believe you, but some people don't tell us everything.
No, I'm just saying, it's been scrutinized once, so there is, there is some level for...
Well, I don't think, yeah.
For me to bring back just a confirmation of that.
If it comes back that there's a problem, it's going to be, it's going to make life difficult for them, more difficult for them, so...
Yeah, because we just won't sign it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Okay, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I don't know why you have to be so argumentative.
Me? Starving.
Okay?
I'm hungry.
So, you're making a motion, I guess?
I was just going to include as a condition that they take all at once side of these plans back.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure they want them back. Uh, okay. So, the normal dates? Okay, somebody make a motion. Let's go on. Move on.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the relief as requested with the construction moratorium from whatever the traditional dates are, and the applicant providing the floodplain information that comforts with the plans. Is that it?
Uh, yeah, works for me. And in substantial compliance with the HTC, these are HTC approved, right? You said that? So, there are certificates that would attach to that?
Okay.
Okay?
Anyone second? Oh, you did.
All right, so, any further discussion? No? All who's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sitting on the next one.
You guys are really, you want to, you go?
Uh, no. So, I think, there's no other business, right?
There's a new one.
There's no other business after new business?
No.
I'm not sitting on the new business.
So, Karen, it's... Oh, well, I don't know.
Okay?
Okay. This is in 3617, an application for Juliet Farlow Hunter. Karen, do you want to come up?
Good evening.
Huh?
Good evening.
Sure.
Do you want to take a break?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Hunter, Zasan. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, I'm here on behalf of Juliet Farlow Hunter and myself. We own the property at 97 Sankity Road in Sconset, and the last time I was here was 1999 to request a modification to a variance. 97 Sankity Road and 84 Baxter merged at the adoption of the 1972 bylaw, zoning bylaw. The way that happened was, these two properties, and you have in your packet, I think, the original flag plan that shows 97 Sankity, and I also have copies if you need them. 97 Sankity and...
It's on page 279.
Do you have it, Lisa?
Yeah, I have it, 279.
Do you have an extra set?
I do.
Thank you.
Want to see one, Michael? I can share with you.
I have one, I just can't find it, though.
There you go.
Don't worry about it, Bill.
Okay, we got it, we got it.
It's all right.
Yeah, we found one.
I saw it earlier, I just can't find it.
All right, so that's, that's the flag plan. It shows the eastern end, which, which is now 97 Sankity and 84 Baxter Road. Juliet's father bought them in 1962, I think, put them into a testamentary trust, a life insurance trust, in 1966, and then died prior to the adoption of the bylaw. And I'll make this part brief, because the addendum, I think, is fairly detailed about this. When it went into the trust of Bank of Chicago, managed these two properties, as well as managing the proceeds from the life insurance trust, and then took over the cottage, which was at 84 Baxter Road. And when I say took over the management of the cottage, they paid the taxes, they dealt with the leases, they dealt with the maintenance, they dealt with all the caretaking. That was what their job was as the trustees of this trust that now held these two properties. What they couldn't do is they couldn't separate title. And actually, there was a decision by the zoning board when David Moretti came in on behalf of these two properties, and they made note in the decision, and you have it in your packet, because the testamentary trust didn't have the right to separate these properties without getting value for them, they couldn't be put in a separate title. In other words, when zoning was adopted, they merged, and that was the end of it. There was no choice that the owners had, because the property was managed by the trust, the Chicago Trust, which I don't think made much difference to them, quite frankly. I don't think they cared about it as much then as they learned to care about it as time went by. The idea that Mr. Farlow had, Juliet's father, was that the cottage on Baxter Road would be for the benefit and for the care of his wife, Dorothy, and the vacant land on Sankity would eventually be for the benefit of his three daughters. And as it turned out, Mrs. Farlow remarried, and her husband was a very good friend of Jimmy Gliddons, and Jimmy talked about it with Mrs. Farlow, who was now Mrs. Frau, and they convinced the bank to put 97 Sankity into trust under, with the continued control of the Chicago Bank, and David Moretti became the trustee of 97. But they were still merged. David came into the zoning board, and the zoning board granted a variance to turn them into two separate buildable lots with certain conditions. The conditions that were on this lot, when I came in in 1999, prior to Juliet purchasing the property, was that ground cover would be limited to 1,355 square feet. There's about 103,000 square feet of lot here, a single dwelling only, and no building within 50 feet of the wetland. And I came in and asked for a modification of that variance to allow 2,500 square feet of ground cover, less than the 3% that would otherwise be allowed in the Lug III zoning district. And was granted that relief. So, the conditions as they stand now are, single dwelling only, that carried forward, 2,500 square feet of ground cover, up from 1,355, and no building within 50 feet of the wetland. And what I'm here to ask today is those three conditions be lifted. There's an as-built-in there that's also the record plan. It shows that the ground cover for the property is 2,460 feet, just slightly less than the 2,500 allowed. We were very careful about this. Because of the work I do, and because of the work my wife does, we wanted to be sure that we stayed within the limits of the variance, and we did. Forty feet short of the 2,500. We have two structures there, a house and a garage studio. And the garage studio doesn't have a kitchen in it. We never snuck in a microwave or a hot plate. We've always used it as a studio. My wife and her friends use it occasionally to exercise, but we've never lived in it. It's never been used as a second dwelling. And we want to be able to have a second dwelling on our property. We want our ground cover to go up by about 650, I think, square feet. Let me be sure about that.
609?
609. We want an additional 609 square feet, which when you add it to the 2,500 is 3% of the lot area. We don't want anything more than would otherwise be allowed in the Lug III district, 3% of our lot area. And the 609 is about the same size as the garage studio, so when you look at the record plan that shows the garage studio, that's about 600 square feet. That's all the extra allowance in terms of ground cover. So, and the relief from the 50-foot setback, I mean, you know, that, that, you know, whether you do that or not is up to you, I suppose. That 50% setback, 50-foot setback is a performance standard of the wetland regulations.
Right.
We can't build within, no, you can't build within 50 feet. The fact that it's redundant, and then there's, in this, in this variance, maybe made sense when the variance was first issued, but doesn't make any sense now. I guess it doesn't make any difference whether it remains or not, because whether it's there or not is immaterial. The property has got a huge wetland on it, and we can't build within 50 feet. So, it just simply mirrors the requirements of both the state act and the local regulations. So, that's what I'm here to request, to allow the ground cover, the additional 600 plus or minus square feet, giving us 3% of our lot area, and allowing us to build a second dwelling. I mean, if we did it, we'd probably just put a, just a kitchen in the studio, quite honestly. But, in any event, whether we do it or not, or whether we sell the property, we want to be able to either own it or sell it without these restrictions. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Is there anybody in the audience who's here to speak? Arthur?
For the record, Attorney Arthur Reed, and I represent five neighboring property owners, or the owners of five neighboring properties. There are three groups of people, three of which are immediate abutters to the easterly boundary of the Hunter property, and the other two are over on the other side of Baxter Road, specifically 82 and 82A Baxter Road, which belong to, which are improved properties belonging to two entities owned by the Hearst family, 80 Baxter Road, which is a vacant lot, and 77 Baxter Road on the other side of Baxter Road, which are, which is an improved, which is an improved property belonging to Josh Postner and Eileen Rudden, and 79 Baxter Road, belonging to Helmut and Caroline Wymer.
Arthur, excuse me, I just want to say for the record that I do have done work and have, with the Hearst, and have worked on those properties, 82A and, or to Billy, if you feel more comfortable with me not sitting. I have a relationship with the Hearst, just professionally, and I've done work on one of those houses.
No, I don't mind you. It's fine what you said to me.
Okay. Sorry, Arthur.
Okay, now, Bill has, I think, accurately described the history of the property. Basically, it consisted of what had historically been shown on a plan as two lots but were in common ownership at the time that Mr. Farlow bought the property back in the 1960s. The property, the lot fronting on Baxter Road, containing approximately 11, 12,000 square feet, had a house that was built about 1960, and the, which is a few years before Mr. Farlow bought it, and the Sankity Road lot was vacant, 97 Sankity Road. And the two lots together are a little less than 120,000 square feet. The property went with that same configuration into Lug III zoning, when zoning went, when Lug III came into existence in 1973. And the result was that the lots merged by operation of law. And in order to sever that merger, the trustee came before the Board of Appeals and obtained a variance, and that was originally obtained in, I think, 1988 or 89, and then no action was taken, and it was reissued later. So, the properties could actually be conveyed into separate ownership within, as it happened, within the Farlow family. But the point is that in order to get that variance, which was granted by a four-to-one vote, there was apparently some concern by the board in terms of the granting of the variance, and conditions were applied. And the relevant conditions that were applied back at that time, which are still... And the relevant conditions that were applied back at that time, which are still in existence today, in one form or another, were first of all, that there be no more than two dwellings on the entire property. The justification was that there could have been a main dwelling and a secondary dwelling under any circumstances. And the board was allowing there to be two dwellings, with the property to be divided into two separate lots. The condition about 50 feet of separation from the wetland, I agree with Bill, is a non-issue either way, because no one can build within 50 feet, in terms of new construction, which is what this would be, without, and where there's nothing within the 50-foot buffer at the present time. The chances of getting a waiver of that from the Conservation Commission are virtually nonexistent, under the present performance standards, which I don't see any likelihood would be changed. So the issue comes down to the ground cover, as well as the number of dwellings. Now, as far as the ground cover is concerned, originally, the decision provided for 1,355 square feet of ground cover, on the basis that there were 1,355 square feet of ground cover on the existing house on the 84 Baxter Lot, and allowing the same amount of ground cover on the 97 Sanctity Road Lot. I'm not sure what the logic was for that, but that was then modified by an amendment, as Bill indicated, to allow it to go to 2,500. I could see that one logical approach would have been that the ground cover on the total of the two lots would have been limited to the 3% on the same basis that the number of dwellings was limited. But the board gave them at that time the 2,500 square feet, which enabled them to build the very nice house and studio that they have at the present time, within the parameters of that. So that's the history, and my clients don't see. And we've reached out to Bill to see if there could be any common ground that we could have on this. But the, my clients do not see why there is any justification for an increase in ground cover, when the overall ground cover that exists at the present time, between 84, which was sold not too long ago by the Farlow family, and 97 Sanctity, is already in excess of the amount that would have been allowed on the overall property, the two lots put together, on the basis of 3% ground cover, if they had remained as a single lot. So therefore, we have no objection to the removal of the 50-foot setback. We're concerned about the possibility of an additional dwelling, without knowing where it might be, and any other factors that we might want to look at. And we're certainly concerned about the possibility of there being any existing ground cover beyond what is already there, and what we have understood, what certainly the Hearsts would have understood when they bought their property, would be the potential ground cover on this lot, a budding adjacent lot.
Thank you. I have a question. What is the ground allowable ground coverage on 84 currently? What zone is that in now? Is that in the area that changed zoning?
1,623.
Yeah. And that, there was a modification that was done. This has been before the board a great many times. There was a modification that gave them that 1,600 odd square feet on that lot, which, as I said, has subsequently been sold.
Right. I'm more asking the question, based on today's zoning, is that 1,623 still, meaning, has the zoning changed? Has it been upzoned, or?
That is now, I believe, in R20 zoning.
Yes, R20, yeah.
Yeah. In which your ground cover would be, what is it now? R20 is, that's still 12 and 1/2%?
12 and 1/2%.
Yeah. And it's an undersized lot with about 12,000 square feet. So either way, they'd be limited to about 1,500. So they've been given a little bit more on that than the ground cover would work out to in R20, yes, R20.
But if you compiled the allowable on 97 to what's currently allowed by zoning today at 84, there wouldn't be 600 square feet of difference.
The, if you added the whole thing together, if you added together the ground cover of 2,460, and was it 1,623?
Maybe 4,000.
Yeah. You're well over, we're less than 120,000 square feet, so the 3%, well, no, I take that back.
Because the zoning's changed.
You're over, if you go back to the original zoning, you're well over.
Right. But by today's zoning?
Today's zoning, you're over also by virtue of a variance on 84.
Right. But by 100 square feet or something. Well, we don't know the square footage of 84, do we?
May I speak to that? Actually, if you take the lot area on 84 and multiply it by 12 and 1/2%, you come up with 1,404. The zoning by law allows you for, excuse me, a lot this size to either be 1,500, or the amount allowable by doing the mathematical computation. In that case, it would be 1,500. As Luck would have it, in 91, they went to the ZBA and got an additional 268 square feet. So the variance allows them 1,623 square feet. In other words, what they're allowed is over what you would otherwise get for a lot this size in the zoning district. Now, all the better for the Butler's. That's fine with us. We don't have a problem with that. And I know that Arthur's not here on their behalf. I know why Arthur is here. But the fact of the matter is, in terms of the equities, the other lot that merged is larger now, by virtue of the early variance and then the zoning change, than would otherwise be allowed for this lot, where we're under the other half of this merger, you know, these twins. We're under what would otherwise be allowed, if you multiplied by 3%, our lot. We don't want to be more than 3%, notwithstanding the Butler's are more than the 12 and 1/2%. We simply want to be the 3%. And, and Arthur can speak to this. And I'll just, the concern, I think, you know, for the Hearsts and Posner and Wymar, is they don't want us to be building in the middle of our lot because of their views. Now, Arthur, feel free to dispute that, but I'm sure that that's the concern. And we have, every property that he mentioned is seasonal, and four of them are rental properties. So I understand them wanting to protect their investment. When I weigh their investment, living in Beacon Hill, San Francisco, and Princeton, New Jersey, that's where their homes are, against our investment, living year-round on Nantucket, I think that our desire to simply build to the ground cover allowable in the zoning district is a fair request to make at the zoning board. That's why you're here. I understand their concern. But if you look at the way our property is shaped, the natural spot for the construction of anything on this property is on the north end, where we put it. That's the biggest pocket, that gets us furthest away from the wetland. The further south you go, into the view shed of the Hearsts, the Wymar and Posner, the more you fight with the front yard setback and the 50-foot setback from the wetland. So the natural place for stuff to happen is on the northern end of our lot. I'm not saying we'd restrict it. They wanted us to restrict it to the northern end. And we don't want to do that. Not because we want to build there. I don't think anyone is going to build there. I think it's probably because if we ever sold our property, they'd be concerned about what a new owner would do. Well, you know what? They're 200 and 300 feet away from the land. And for Wymar and Posner, on the Baxter roadside, they're at elevation 80. We're at elevation 76 or 74. I mean, no matter what they've built down there, they would see over it. But that's the concern, and that's particularly irritating to me. And maybe you're gathering that in my voice. But we're not asking, I don't think, for anything other than what would equitably be allowed for anybody on a lot this size, who pays attention to the property, who have been good stewards and good neighbors, and the difference is 600 square feet. The difference, by the way, is just about this size. This is the garage studio that we have. That's what you see here on the northern end of our property. That is about what we'd gain, if you let us go to 3%.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. I know what it looks like.
Jeff, are you feeling essential at all?
He's not sitting.
I know. Well, I was thinking, yeah.
I think you may have to, you know, I think you need to be part of the discussion.
I can still be part of the discussion. I'm just not, well, I'm looking forward.
Okay. Well, I was thinking that I might not vote either, but.
Do you have a conflict?
No.
So.
And we'll see. And we should just keep discussing.
I think we should.
So anyway, what you see there is about what we're requesting.
We should know now. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
We don't have to, though, right? Because based on those new rules, like, we could all sit here, and she could just not vote. Because the applicant doesn't have a problem with her conflict, but if she doesn't feel comfortable voting.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to make the decision, but I've been through a few rodeos here. And I think that, given what I've heard so far, that she should decide.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's fair.
So are you comfortable stepping in, Jeff? Yeah, okay. Then I'm not going to sit.
Okay.
Okay, if I can respond, if Bill has finished. First of all, I don't deny that a major part of my client's concern about this does relate to their view. And if we were simply dealing with a situation in which I were coming in here saying, please don't allow the relief, because it'll interfere with my client's view, then we all know what the rules are with regard to that. But the fact is, we're not just relying upon that. We're relying upon the actual circumstances and history related to this property. The Farlow family got the benefit of being able, and I have no question that they had proceeded in good faith throughout, they're the kind of people who wouldn't do anything improper. I know that. I know them. But they obtained from the Board of Appeals the ability to split the property, which they didn't have as a matter of right. And as a result of that, they were able to ultimately, and it remained in the family for quite some time, sell off to Butler the 84 Baxter Road Lot, with the benefit of the modification of the variance that they obtained, allowing expansion beyond what had originally been existing on that lot, which presumably helped in connection with the sale of that lot. And the, it's almost as if there was a bargain made between the property owner and the Board of Appeals, in terms of being able to split the property, with certain conditions which they either agreed to at the time, or didn't appeal from. That's been liberalized since, been liberalized very substantially since, to a point where they have 2,500 square feet rather than the, and they've built close to it, in terms of the, rather than the 1,355 square feet, under the terms of the original variance. And all we're asking is that the Board of Appeals hold to the position that they took in allowing the 2,500 square feet, which wasn't objected to by anyone at the time. And now, we feel it's a bit much to ask the Board of Appeals to go beyond the amount of ground cover and the limitation on secondary dwelling that was part of the relief that was originally granted. The Board of Appeals didn't have to grant the relief. And they did, and that obviously benefited the family.
Madam Fu, Susan.
I think I'm in the chair, so.
Yes. The fact of the matter is, the Board of Appeals modifies variances all the time, and special permits. That's what you're here for. That's what you're here to do. Josh Posner had a variance granted for his property on Baxter Road, and seven months later came to this board and asked for a modification, and was granted the modification. I know most recently, there have been a couple of variances over on Coffin, in Tom Nevers, where lots that were split by the construction of Coffin Street into Wright's Landing, became buildable lots, able to be sold. One of them with no conditions at all, 36,000 or 37,000 square feet, can have two dwellings on it, and the mother lot, as it were, also has two dwellings on it, for a total of four dwellings. So I can't support Arthur's sort of contention of reliance, because it's the sort of thing that, it's a sort of request that you guys, as a board, hear, and grant or not, by the way, all the time. If we were coming in and asking for something, in terms of a percentage, a greater amount equal to the greater percentage amount that 84 Baxter was granted, then I could understand you guys saying, you know, that you're out of line built. But we're not doing that. 84 has more than it would otherwise be allowed, and that's just a quirk. All we're looking for is 3% of our lot area, 103,000 square feet, I think, the additional 600, give or take, that you see in that photograph. And Arthur and I are friends, and I have, honestly, the greatest respect.
Absolutely.
Greatest respect for him. But I know what the concern is. And I wish it were simply concern for reliance on a variance and a circumstance that started 60 years ago. The concern is something's going to be built in the middle of our yard that's going to upset their view of the Sanctity Clubhouse, or the sun going down. I can't see the ocean because of Posner's house and Wymar's house, but I mean, that's life. That's the way it works. That's what happens when you buy a piece of property. If they want the view, they should have bought the property, I guess. I don't know. I'm beginning to sound snarky, and I don't mean to, but I know why they're in opposition to the request. The request is modest, it's equitable, and it's fair. And to the extent that this property, 97 Sanctity, is a unique property, singular, in the zoning district, with respect to this request, and that the relief can be granted without detriment or derogation to the bylaw, and what the bylaw stands for, and that if you don't grant it, it is a financial burden on the applicant. I think, given the circumstance, you can grant the relief. And given the circumstance of the lot, how the structures are forced to the north, at the end of the day, Arthur's clients will be satisfied too, just by virtue of the other regulations, HDC, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, all those other commissions will come into play, and protect what they actually want to protect, while allowing us to have nothing more than anybody else with this size lot. And that's it. I suppose I'll continue to talk as long as Arthur does.
Right.
Right. If we had... If we had before us plans, elevations and site plan showing a proposed change to the property, that would be one thing. We'd be able to look at it, and we'd be able to determine what, if any, concerns we had about it. But we don't have that. And I know that the concept here is that, you know, Bill and Juliet may sell the property at some point. You know, their daughter is now off at college, and they may, you know, want to do something along that line at some point. And I know from our conversation that they don't have any plans to build anything right now. And I would respectfully suggest that perhaps this is a discussion that would be better had later on, if and when there are some plans by them or a future owner to do, including a contract purchaser, if they ever got to that point, to build something more on the property, to come back in, show the board what it is, and let the board have an idea of what that would be, and let us have an idea whether it's something we felt that we could agree to, my clients could agree to or not. But I think that we really would object to that being a blank check for the addition of ground cover without any limitation and without the ability to see what's going on.
Does anyone on the board have any comments?
I don't think that that's an unusual idea or request to come up with a site plan and perhaps building location on the site plan of whatever it was you wanted to do, whether it was a separate building or enlargement of this building. I think that might be helpful, and it might make everyone's job on this board a lot easier.
We don't have any plans. I mean, that's not the idea. I'm not coming here for a blank check, as it were. There are restrictions. It's 3% of the lot area. It's the HDC. It's the Planning Board for approval for a second dwelling. As I said, I mean, it's the sort of thing this board very recently has seemed apt to grant to other homeowners on smaller lots, where when two lots have been involved, four dwellings are involved. And the limitation is, in the case of the smaller lot, 50,000 square feet or the 3% of ground cover, the greater of the two. And, you know, I'm not going to come up with a plan. The point isn't to come in here with a plan and restrict the property. The point is to come in here and ask you to remove the restrictions.
Yeah. I tend to agree with Bill, because I think the argument that I'm hearing made against this is that, you know, the board has to rely on this decision that we, the board, the previous board had made. So if that's the argument, I don't, coming in with a site plan and a plan, and then all of a sudden that argument goes away, I don't, I think we either, we either, you know, take Arthur's argument and that's, and agree with it, or we don't. And I don't, I don't think that the applicant should be made to come up with something that he's going to be held to when who knows what happens with his property in the future or his daughter or whatever. Like, I just, I don't feel comfortable doing that. But I'm just one person, so.
I tend to agree with you. I mean, we don't have to lock him down to specifics right now. He's just looking for a general idea, ruling, what have you, so.
And I think, sorry, I think also the, something about the property being merged because of it being held in the trust and then being allowed to, you know, demerge, as it may be. You know, I'm not sure that I think that this lot should continue to be, especially when that second lot has been sold off. I mean, it's a, looking at the map, it's a fairly large lot for the area. There is a lot of open space on it. And I don't think they're asking for a lot. I mean, it's 103,000 square feet. And, you know, the board saw fit when it made sense to increase it from whatever, 13 to 2,500. I don't see why this board can't see fit with the circumstances that are coming before us now to give the extra 665 or the ability to have it, to bless it as a lot of record and give them the 3%.
I tend to agree with you there.
Yeah. The important thing here, I think, is we're not for a removal restriction, but it's the subject of the zoning restrictions.
That exist.
That exist.
Right. So they're not, they're not getting anything.
Regardless of what has gone on in history.
Yeah. Yeah. They're not getting anything better than, or greater than their neighbors have.
Would you be willing to limit it to two structures on the lot? A main house and a secondary dwelling?
No. I think not yet, quite honestly. I mean, again, I don't know why. You know, right now, as an example, if an owner wanted to, again, with the idea of it being in the northern end of the property, if an owner wanted to put in a pool and a cabana, then they can't do that without taking down the studio. Again, the added ground cover is modest in its size. It's about the same size as the photograph you have in front of you, which is off the assessor's site. So in all honesty, the idea for Juliet and I are to remove the restrictions to allow us the freedom to move forward. You know, our kid is gone. Whether we live in the house or not, or sell it, is, you know, is the sort of personal business that all homeowners, those are the decisions that homeowners make at this point in their lives.
I, sorry.
And I frankly don't want to be beholding to my neighbor's rental properties. It just is not, I don't think, fair, frankly.
I don't understand, and I didn't see it in the decision, but I might have missed it, what the reasoning was, maybe, and maybe it was the zoning at the time, but why they, why the board at the time, in increasing the ground cover, limited it to the 25 and didn't just make it, you know, become conforming with what was in existence.
I think, Susan, probably, in all honesty, I asked for that.
Okay. Because it seems like a little bit of, like, if you're going to make the jump, like, why not just do it all the way versus a middle step?
Well, partly because I was, you know, I was a young attorney, and I didn't want to come in and grab at it. I wanted to be able to leave something, I think, probably for the zoning board. And the 2,500 square feet and the single-family dwelling only, it probably at the time made sense for me and for my wife. Again, you know, we built a nice house. We stayed within the confines of the zoning decision. We've abided by it. You guys are always complaining about, if it says 2,500, don't come in with 2,501 and ask for a variance. You know, we kept ourselves exactly the way we knew we had to. And now I'm back, quite honestly, looking for this further relief, which, again, I think is, for the umpteenth time, very modest and not unexpected, and less, quite frankly, on a percentage basis than 84 Baxter has the benefit of, which seems a little bit crazy to me, but nonetheless.
Anyone else have anything to say?
I assume the 2,500 was what they would have asked for, because that's approximately what they intended to build, and in fact, did build, what, the following year, I think.
Yeah. And as I said, Arthur, that's, you know, the reason I asked for it is exactly the way I just explained. Nothing more, nothing less. The property was actually transferred thereafter, and then we went and spoke to an architect, knowing what the new limitation was. Really, it was that simple. It was, you know, wandering in here, fresh out of law school, and asking the board to turn over this variance and say, give me 3%, just didn't seem like a good strategy. Every goofball like me or Arthur, anybody that comes in here with a suit on, is always going to have a strategy. And that was the idea at the time. Nothing more, nothing less. Nothing more, nothing less. You're not a goofball, Arthur. I'm sorry, myself.
What, are you under any time commitment here?
I prefer not to continue it.
I mean, I am embarrassed to say, I knew approximately where your house was, but I was never sure. And if possible, I'd like to take a, you know, walk around and see what's going on there relative to your neighbors.
Sure. If that's what you'd like.
That's what I'd like to do.
Sure. I understand.
Is anyone else? I mean, I don't.
I don't feel the need to, but if you feel like that's valuable for you, then. Anyone else feel like?
By the sense of the board, other than Michael?
I don't think I need to look down.
Yeah. Michael, if you feel like you need to, then I'd support continuing to that point, but I personally don't need to.
Is everyone going to be here next month?
I will. Yes.
Okay. I'd like, I know that the neighbors are making a stink over it, and I don't know exactly what it looks like over there. So, I mean, I have an idea. I've driven by there 10,000 times, but if that's not a big problem, I'd like to take a peek.
Okay. If that's okay with you.
It is. I don't want to come back in a month and get piled on again. I really am. I don't want to do that. And, you know, why wouldn't Arthur come back in and pick it right back up again? I mean.
Well, we've already heard what we've heard, and we don't need, I don't think we need to hear it again. So I don't think we need to have the full history discussion and all of that again, but if it will make, if it makes Michael feel more comfortable, and I think it would be, I would assume, I think, to your benefit. Do you want to make that motion? Anyone want a second?
I'll second the motion to continue until November 9.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A pause?
Okay. So that was four to one.
See it, and, thanks for the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone want a second? Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.